Boon Island. Any written comments? Any public comments? Be a public hearing for consideration to sale of 422 Marion Street, Boon Island. Any written comments? Any public comments? See public hearing for consideration sale of Public Broadway and 1000 block of Marion Street, blocks 1210, block 9, Arnett's second edition. Any written comments? Any public comments? Nothing publicly disclosed. D set a public hearing from September 20th, 2021 at 6:00 PM on post plan specifications, formal contact and estimate cost in 628 St. Louis Street demolition. Second, all the roll.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Pickler.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Day number four, report of standing committees, A Policy Administration, DJ.
We just had a brief meeting this evening. G P will present and talk about saving 223 miles. So Jim's some of that interview. For the reading.
The safety transportation committee, Stephen. Their request were from the airport. Please time the right away for example. Well, we saw story, you mentioned thirty, but I don't think it's state allowed. So I'll make sure that's really to tell. But if it's our story, it becomes a subject. So one time.
It's an organization. I'll make a motion.
Second, all the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Pickler.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Yeah, and then Craig for the homecoming parade.
Yes. So this came in after our last public safety meeting and they need their parade is going to be before the next public safety meeting. But it's going to be the homecoming parade. Like again in past years, two years ago, we added a little bit to the west. So it starts to get revealed, goes past the nursing home, comes back and then does the normal about six street stories. So well.
Introduction of the public. Second, all the roll.
Pickler.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Standing committee, Stephen.
Just like a reminder that there are needs more. I have no. All right.
Just one item, your honor, update on ABC downtown broadband survey. I'll pass off the bill or the random.
Let me take it though.
Sure. Go ahead.
So the state of Iowa is in the midst of a special CPG funding round. It's actually called CPG CB. And it's a rather quick turnaround that if the cities ever worked with CPG before, you know, that's a rather long drawn out process. But one of the things that's able to be funded in this special round is broadband. And doesn't happen necessarily with some of the other things that broadband projects really sometimes have an encounter in terms of multiple providers, those sorts of things. And so knowing that when we did your downtown survey, we heard a lot about broadband, the need for broadband choice in that area. And so when the special, special funding round became available, I guess this is a project that surfaced that we wanted to report to the city. We have a general estimate what we think the project would be. And we know about what we could ask for. So we think it'll be just shy of a million dollars. And we could request up to half of that from these funds. So the actual, we would do a request for proposals from providers that could actually do the project. But the city would need to be ultimately the pastor of those funds in order to be able to support the project. So we have some steps in front of us if the council is interested. But one of the things we need to do, because we are working with CPG, is to ensure that we are serving a well modern income marketplace. So it'd be great if it can serve the businesses, but we really need to create the opportunity for people that maybe don't have access, living on hotspots, to have access to high speed internet. So what, what we're proposing we do is we actually have a meeting with the landlords that own property in your downtown area to find out if they're willing to really partner. If we could have a provider get service to their building, would they be willing to extend that service to provide a high speed internet to their tenants? So while it'd be a great project, like I said, to be able to serve your businesses, we do need to ensure that we are going through funding that's federal funding needs to be eliminated. So that's really where we're at. I think it would be great for the community, but I feel like before we spend too much time, I think we got to find out if that partnership exists with the willingness to be able to stick service. So Bill or Craig, anything you would add to that?
I would just add on to that, that if the response is positive from the downtown landlords, then we're going to be moving awfully fast on this because these funds are first come, first served basis.
So you'll see, see us again if I think if it's a positive meeting. So, so yeah, and I guess I would ask your help making sure we get our landlords there. Do you know if folks that own property, we've reached out to them, we've ran things. But Monday night is when we're going to be here at City Hall to really find out if there is an interest and we'll go from there. So we know the business is starting. Any questions from you? Well, we're keeping our finish process. There's an interest and we can move fast with that application in.
Thank you, Brenda. That's it, your honor.
Number five, department reports, building official endings, what is the Stevie finance office from Grant? City attorney jail?
No report.
Director of Public Works, Yana Ross.
No reports, sir.
Indian under engineering, sir. And Public Safety Chief Adams.
Yes, your honor, thank you. First thing I want to remind everybody is we're having our September 11 ceremony this coming Saturday. It's a come and go event if you want to be there all day. But it really starts off with the timeline of the events that happened on September 11. We have, besides the fire department, we have Boom PD, we have the sheriff's office, dispatch, Ogden Fire, National Guard, all participating, Boone County Emergency Management, all participating in the event and taking a little portion of what's happening that day and trying to make sure that the memory lives on of the, the lives that were lost that day. So with that, I'll move on to A, which is discussion of the assistance to firefighters grant. Back in, I left an informational sheet on your desk, but back in January, the fire department applied for an assistance to firefighters grant through FEMA, like we've done several years in a row. For the last several years, we were turned down. This year we got lucky and were awarded a grant to replace a tanker truck, which has been on our radar to happen anyways. The downfall is, is that tanker truck weighs more than what our current situation can handle with that. So we would need to look at alternative options for housing or for leaving this vehicle outside or, or just a few, a few different things. So in front of you for, for option, or for item A, is there some options that we can look at that are kind of tied with the grant? The first option is option one, which would be to deny the AFG grant to give back the, the 292,000 or 278,000, which is, which is the federal portion minus our, our portion. The possibilities of getting other grants in the future would, would probably be at risk of turning back this, a grant like of this size, but it is an option. Option two is we could accept the AFG grants and, and while seeking alternative storage options for this vehicle, whether that's outside, I've talked to JR and their full down there at Public Works, just looking at some options of where to be able to house this vehicle. Or option three is accept the grant and explore funding options to, to put a station addition on to our station. I did, this last CIP, I did put in for a station addition. We talked about it at budgeting, but it was something really for the future here to look at putting some money away, savings, those kinds of things without the anticipation of this grant coming through to, to funding. So with that, I'll ask some, entertain any questions.
I don't see there much choice. Personally, because I'm sure you can give back that kind of money for someone who knows what it can be that.
Sure.
So, and I don't think that you, you know, I don't have too much incentive about you have, have alternative stories.
Sure.
You know, so I, I, I think it's worth. I think it's worth the issue. And you obviously have been there for some time without the waiting. So. Time's gone.
Sure. Yeah. Not great timing, but time has come. Sure.
But I, I just don't see much of a choice.
Just what is the lead time after accepting the grant now and when we can get?
So by the time we, it's going to take a little bit because we'll have to. Before, if you remember before, when we bought our fire truck, we used HGAC, which is a bid consortium. We're still trying to get confirmation from the federal government if we can do that or because it's a federal grant that we have to do a formal bid process. But once the, the actual papers are signed, it's about a 14 to 18 month lead time because they're having trouble, if you can see what's going on with all the other vehicles in the world, they're having trouble getting the chassis, because this would be a commercial chassis, not a custom chassis. Yeah, absolutely.
I agree.
Any idea what it would cost?
So in 2016, we did a cost estimate with Graylock Construction. Right there was about 200,000. When I met with Jim Tomatic, an engineer, he came and reaffirmed the floor issue that we have on the, on the south side. It's probably in that 350,000 range. Because the amount of excavating and.
To reinforce the area that we had.
No, to, for a station addition.
I don't want to give them like that.
And when you. Yeah.
Trying. Figure out how. I know this is long term, we were thinking about it. Maybe this is the time to figure it out. I just say I don't want, I don't want to get advice.
Can you explain to council the primary reasons this?
Yeah, sure. So it's a tanker truck. So what it is, is it, as you can see in my, my notes here, is we currently get rid of two trucks and it basically takes the place of two trucks because it can haul double the water. And 90% of the time, 95% of the time, it's used for rural operations. The other 5% or there is some parts of town that we struggle with water supply and that we do use it, whether it's dead ends, whether there's just not hydrants in those areas. So it is used for both, but primarily for rural operations.
So you're going to reach out to the county?
So there's a lot of, of funding options that we are seeking, that we will be seeking and exploring.
So you're going to reach out to the county?
Yeah, absolutely.
Justin and I've had that conversation and we're looking at all options on that fundness. That is certainly something.
Since it services the county. That is, I think they would have some interest in that. I'm just saying.
Yeah. Well, absolutely. And that's, there's, there's, there's a couple of options throughout the rural area that we can look at.
They have some funding options too.
For, for a 5% match, I would say you've got some safety issue. Save a dollar.
Yes, 13,000, 13,000.
13,000, yeah, a little over 13,000. Yep.
Oh, yeah. Take that out of the reserve. You're not going to let, yeah. We're going to spend 350,000 to make 300,000.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
One, one of the, the other things that, that helps with, with an addition, again, it's a lot of money, is currently we cannot tip our cabs up in our current station. We have to pull, that's why if you drive by, you see the cabs are tipped up outside. We can't tip them up and get the safety bars down inside. This new addition will allow us to go higher so we can actually do all, all the maintenance inside.
How many would they, how many, how much would the new addition accommodate?
It could accommodate three, really. Yep. With the depth, but and, and the biggest reason is just so we can get our ladder truck in there to service it. So it'd be the same depth as our ladder bay.
I wasn't a councilwoman, okay? So is there living quarters?
No, 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 it's just, it's just a.
Just storage.
Yeah, a shell. Yep. Yep, a shell.
We were looking at it because equipment keeps getting bigger and our fire station doesn't. So we eventually we have to build the bigger stalls to accommodate your equipment.
Well, we either spent 350,000 now or 550,000 later.
Right.
I'd say what you need to answer now. There is a resolution on the agenda that was approved by council. So that Justin can notify the government that we accept.
So I think, do we look at voting on option one, two, or three first and then accepting the resolution?
One, two, three, one, two, three. All right.
Becker. Yes. Ray.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Pickler.
Yes.
And then I would look for a, a motion for, to accept the resolution 2918.
Some move. Second, all the roll.
Ray.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Pickler.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
All right, thank you, council. Appreciate the support and that's all I have, mayor.
Next up, Chief Google.
The reporter, huh?
Steve Administrator, Bill. A few items. First one is the public works director position. So for those of you who remember back in 2010, the current public works director resigned and left the city. And at that time, the city wasn't in the best financial conditions. And at that time, Luke Nelson was the city administrator and then Tackle JR, who was the parks director, he agreed to take the public works director position as well. So JR has been our public works director since 2010. In some conversations with JR over the last few months, we have come to the conclusion, or JR has, that he's ready to move on. So effective December 31st of this year, he is going to resign his position as a public works director. However, in the contract that was signed with him back in 2010, he is still allowed to go back to the public works director, or I'm sorry, arts director position. He has chosen to do that for a period of one year and he will resign from the city completely on December 30th, 31st, 2026. There's a resolution in the consent agenda for this. So the next year, JR will still work with public works. We still need him to do some tasks. In addition, he'll need to help with the transition of the public works director. I've talked with some of you before about the need as we move forward to that public works director to be an engineer. So what I will do with your approval is, so we have the approval of this of JR's agreement and then the approval that I will move forward, start filling the public works director position to be effective January 1st, 2022. One of the requirements for that position will be an engineer. And I would ask that utility committee, as we go through this, but all, all the labor and everything, but one way of interviews, it might be beneficial to have the utility committee participate in. So the goal is to hire a public works director who is an engineer to take that decision. And I'll answer any questions. Okay, I'll move on. JR, anything you'd like to say?
Just, I can do that if you, I work a lot. Thank you.
Okay, my second item is we've talked before about the American Recovery Money. Staff has come up with three projects and we want to make sure that the elected officials are okay with. If you are, then we will move forward. And moving forward means that we will begin to be able to justify those projects according to the rules of American Recovery Money. We will, there is an avenue for us to get our projects approved through the auditor's office at the state level. And if we get a project that was ever audited, they're going to do it for the federal government anyway. So those projects, the first one is, we've talked before about the South Main Street project where there are water lines, I believe they're four inch now. They need, they're just blowing up. We have a lot of repairs on there. We need, so this is a replacement project that goes right along with the requirements on the American Recovery Money, where we place that with six inch pipe. And then in addition, in order to complete, I think it's called a move right here, where part of that project will add six or eight inch water pipe.
Eight inch main.
Eight inch main to the east to hook up with South Marion West Park. And you can, with us paving that in the future, understand why we need to do that. But while we think this qualifies is because this will improve the quality of service that the citizens get over there with water pressure and things like that. So that falls along those lines as well. So that's the first project. The second project is replacing the backwash blower at the water treatment facility. That is a piece of equipment that's been in place since the building was built in 2000, I'm sorry, 1998 or nine, 21, 22 years old. That runs every day. It's the only one in there. When, when the building was constructed, there was another place that they put in and wired in everything for an additional backwash blower. At that time, the city chose not to put it in. However, at this time, those things are 21 years old. So the current system, I don't think that we can follow the current system for the backwash blow. So it needs to be engineered and Terry and I have talked about this. It needs to be reengineered because it's going to be a different setup. Still replacing the backwash blower, but we'll have to engineer it and they'll have to assist with that. That's the second project. The third one is a safety project at the waste, or excuse me, the water treatment facility that puts railings and stairs on the silo that the workers need to have access to. This is a safety project as well as making sure that we comply with any OSHA requirements. So we feel that this as well would make, would qualify. So to start with, as you know, we got, it's our 922,000 was our first half payment. So we received that money. So we want to begin on these three projects. Again, we're going to bet them with the auditor's office to make sure the engineer, SEH, has helped us along with this process in justifying the projects. So I'm looking for approval on those three projects to start spending that American Recovery Money on these three things. Ultimately, I'm going to be coming back here with more projects, but this is a good start for that money. And we feel they're very important projects that need to be done.
We have a pretty stringent timeline for that too, right?
The money.
To spend that money.
Yes. 2024.
So.
So we've got, and that's even with us getting the second half of the year from now. And so we've got to be ready to do it.
On that backwash blower project, it's the intent to leave the old one in place as a backup.
Right. Yes.
So which we should have anyway.
Yes.
There should be a backup for that because without that you can't process. So.
Correct.
That it's going to kill two birds with one stone, where they have a backup system.
And we have been making repairs to that backwash blower.
Right.
Reasonable. So it's, it's time.
Yep.
We certainly think it falls within the guidelines. So those are the three. Again, any questions, concerns, or I would ask for a motion, go for it.
What's the expected cost of all three of these?
The backwash blower, I cannot say because we're still looking into it. The cost estimate of the South Main Street project, including engineering at 18% of project and 20% of construction contingencies that's added in there, that amount alone is 49,000. So the total was 343,950. So you're talking about replacing South Main, going south and then making a left hand turn, going east with new pipe to meet up with Marion and, and South Marion West Park.
Which meets some of the requirements for that projected, that project also too, right?
Yes. It will help in the future. It will help with the future, what we're counting on out there for that. Correct. The second, or the other one, I do have some numbers on with SEH engineering. It is the safety with putting the railings and the stairs and everything is about $61,000. Now.
I can't believe the backwash board would be over 100,000. That's.
Right. We were, we were budgeting 200,000 when Dan was here, but you're right. And you, you had a conversation with Perry from SEH, he was thinking the same thing you are around there. And then you add on course engineer, because they're going to, it's going to have to be designed, put any one in there because they just changed so much over the 21 years. Correct. So those are the, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say with Jerry's expertise, you feel good about the price for the South Main project also?
Yeah. Yeah, underground's more expensive now.
It is. And remember, we're replacing pipe with bigger pipe. I'm replacing, correct.
Thank you, Joe, I have some screen work.
So please, if you, if you agree with those projects, yes, sir. No motion to approve. Second, call the roll.
Bert.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Pickler.
Yes.
Becker. Yes, Ray.
Yes.
And just a reminder, there'll be contracts coming forward with SEH to design these projects in the near future. So you can see it again. My third update is Councilman Ray and Mormon and myself had a meeting with the school on August 31st. This is in regards to the new school road. Projections of the cost of that road have come in quite a bit higher, to say the least. Tonight, I just want to tell you that we met with them and I'll have a further update as we move forward on that. They are, I believe are going to be, have a school board meeting on the 11th of October at 6:30. Myself and I have the councilman Mormon and I'm not sure about where, plan to attend that meeting. So in case we need to answer any questions for the school board, but there's more to come. I guess is what I'm trying to tell you. Stephen or anything you want to add. Questions? My next item is the 628 demo. I want to remind and let council know that will, it will require a special council meeting at 6:00 PM on the 27th of December. It will be a, well, 27, it'll be a quick one. Tomorrow, they will release the bid documents. We have a pre-bid walkthrough with contractors in DeNovo on Friday at 1 o'clock. The bids are due the 22nd of September, 1 o'clock. They'll be opened by myself and DeNovo and probably JR. And I think come with Mormons coming in the auditorium at 1 o'clock. And then at the advice of our consultant on this, DeNovo will accept their recommendation for the, to award the contract and that'll be on the 27th. We, as you know, we set a public hearing for everything for the 20th. So that public hearing will occur on the 20th of April and everything will be in the packet for your review. Kim and I are currently looking over it. We have some questions for DeNovo. And actually, I would mind discussing that with Terry at some point. On what they said this. So that's the timeline of, of the demo. Is any questions I can answer? Okay, my next item is the update on the wellness center. Staff has been working on this and then having conversations with Councilman Mormon and Councilman Pickler. What we would like to bring forward is on the October 4th, council meeting, a public discussion of the wellness center. The elected officials so choose to move forward with that. But that discussion would entail is funding options as well as the process, meaning does this body want to vote to move forward with the wellness center? Center, or does it choose to take it to a special, special election, which would be held in March of 2022? So those are the things that staff is bringing forward, unless you want us to change it. But that's what we're expecting to happen on October 4th. And then after that discussion, I know Councilman Pickler and Mormon are going to be holding public meetings. I think the first one, I'm not sure I have it down. Do you remember?
Later in October. We were waiting to see.
October.
How COVID and everything.
First one, right. So that'll give the community a chance to come out and talk. And then what at least staff's expectation is then on the November 1st. So that'll give the, uh, community a chance to come out and talk, and then what at least staff's expectation is then, on the November first council meeting. We will just, bring it up for discussion again and ask some sort of direction from the elected officials on how you wish to proceed. The funding, if so, or so that that can be presented to the public at some point, that's what the elected officials are thinking. As well as the process on whether you're gonna vote, you're gonna just take the vote, or, or you're gonna vote for it, or go to the special, uh, election in March of two thousand twenty-two.
So the October fourth public discussion, is that gonna be during the regular meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
What time's the September twenty-seventh meeting?
It'll be six, normal, normal meeting, but, yeah, should take a little longer. Uh, Greg and Terry, by letting thing out on the month's, uh, one we talked about, or bring out, I think I covered it all in my notes.
No, what, what we're just gonna be discussing on the fourth is gonna be the financing side of it, the funding options, and public vote, or vote as a collective body. The reason we're doing this is, I know we're all getting questions on it, I know we're all getting questions on community did this, or another community did this. We wanted it to be out for public discussion for thirty days, to have everyone on board, and everyone have plenty of time to talk to the constituents. That way, there is no question whatsoever when we have a vote on the first on what we decide to proceed with, that that is what we decide to do as an elected body. That's it?
No. Have a good, uh, question?
Yeah, October's free on there, it's seven, oh, everything.
Make some sort of decision on the November first, or council. Okay, my last item is, Councilman Science and I had a discussion about, uh, budget updates, uh, what Andre is giving council, and, and I think there's some concern, and Eli, please jump in here. Uh, if I mistake, that concerns about what is putting out there, whether it's hard to understand. So what we talked about was, what I, what I get every month are monthly budget reports for each department. And I spend time each month when I get those going through them to make sure our budgets are still on track, there's nobody that's blowing up their budget, or if there is, what the reason is. They're a fairly simple document, but for all the departments, they're pretty thick. So I'm, I guess I'm asking the whole councils, is there something different you want us to do? I will tell you that we're limited on the software that we have. If you remember, when we did budgets for fiscal year twenty-one, we put aside, I think seventy-five thousand dollars to start saving, so that we can get new software. I think new software will change some of these things where they may, make it easier, uh, to, I think, uh, Councilman Science talked about, uh, some easier stuff on the website and things like that. I think we can solve some of that stuff with the new software, and I'm very excited.
The software that we're talking about will not do anything for our website. The software that we're talking about is our accounting software, so what that does is our, uh, utility billing, um, council payroll, payroll, um, general ledger, building department, use the zip for building permits. Um, the software that you guys want, or that's being talked about, that some of the other cities are using, is a sixteen thousand dollar software that they spend every year, sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, that software brings in information from the U, uh, U S Census websites. Um, it brings in, um, budget information, it brings in C F P information, and it pretty much just, uh, automates a lot of the Excel spreadsheets that I'm already doing. And then making them pretty also. Their Microsoft spreadsheets are, are. Probably well made.
So that was the discussion, um, I certainly think, quickly from wrong, new software will improve some of that thing. It may not give us exactly what, uh, Eli and I talked about.
The new software will be, and, and we don't have a new software, we don't even have a company that we're gonna go with. Um, next weekend, I will make a city, I hope to, uh, kick off a good, start on talking to a lot of the different centers out there, um, letting them know that we're out shopping. Um, but I'm hoping that the flexibility on reports that I can create will be more user-friendly. Right now, our software just is not working with us, um, or any other city of, for that matter. Um, they've taken away a lot of our abilities of the old. Our software got bought out three years ago, and the new company has taken away some of our forwarding capabilities and even our user abilities, um, on our day-to-day operations with the new software of theirs. Um, trying to improve it, I guess, but it's actually tied our hands for a lot of things.
So this new software's gonna make it easier for staff to respond to our questions, and the public questions that they think that they need to know?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, it makes the daily tasks easier also. Again, we don't have software picked out, so that would be our goal, is that we're not spending, I mean, sometimes when we call, it's three to two weeks before we ever get a call back, uh, from our current software when we're having problems. The reports that Bill's talking about, that I give them on a monthly basis, I printed those reports for fifteen years, and it, over the last, well, since February, uh, every time I go print those, the report format is completely wiped out, and I have to read them. This last month, uh, they spent two weeks, we couldn't hang up at least, uh, taking our data back and trying to figure out why every month, the format is just gone. Um, and hopefully, knock on wood, then they figure out the problem, and it's not blowing up that issue. Yeah. What do we pay for our current services? Um, the sixteen, what's our current? No, uh, so that's different, so there's two different softwares that we're talking about. Our current software will pay about eighteen thousand dollars a year for our annual maintenance, and that, like I said, is our council table payroll, utility billing, that is kind of our day-to-day operation software. The software that the, these other communities are using is, um, some of them is called an integration budget software that they're, like, go to Mason City's website. You can go out there and you can put in, uh, what your house's value is and figure out your taxes, if you can go, I mean, it's pretty. Mean different. Yeah, you, the skies illuminate out there, if you wanna go out there and play with it, um, you can do all kinds of things. But like what Dubuque is doing, they have a pretty basic system, I assume, um, because that's the one that I think that I just, uh, previewed, and it was sixteen thousand dollars a year. That would be in addition to our accounting software, and what I'm getting from other communities, um, our accounting software's gonna double. Uh, what we now have is the basic city government accounting software, and it'd be about a million most of the time. Um, so I'm looking at a couple of different softwares that are big in the city, in the state, uh, and they're running about twice, about thirty thousand dollars a year just for our accounting software. So you would add another sixteen thousand dollars on if you wanted to get a integrative software that would allow you to do the budget and C F P online. And, and that would be a minimal sixteen thousand for new software, is I hope that.
How old's our current software?
Our current software, uh, is from two thousand and one.
I'm assuming, I'm sorry. I'm assuming with the upgrades like Dubuque from a city, there's additional staffing?
Correct, uh, Dubuque, um, they have a dedicated person that just does budget, that's all they do is budget, on top of like finance officer, assistant finance officer, council table person, I mean, they have a huge stack. But you're also talking about a population of sixty thousand, uh, or sixty thousand people, so. And I'm comparing apples to apples on, I'm standing there, even.
So. The new software hopefully will improve some of these things, but in the interim, are you, is there something that you folks want that we're not giving you? Work on it if need be, uh, the budget monthly reports that Councilman Science talked about, we can certainly go on those, or I guess we can email those to you, rather than printing them with that one.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any concerns that you feel like need to come up?
And just so you know, those are just a permanent budget reports, they're not the whole city.
As base of general expenses.
Staff, I'd like to bring in some of my questions, thank you for that, even with twenty-year-old software.
So would you suspect to be on anything that you hear from these cities? Number six, consent agenda, there are items on the consent agenda, agenda we'd like to remove, just separately, but it's not a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All roll.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Pickla?
Yes.
Sucker? Yes, Ray?
Yes.
Berth?
Yes.
Okay, number seven, ordinance is a wave second reading ordinance, twenty-two sixty-eight to allow the city of Boone to update chapter one seventy of Boone city ordinances pertaining to flood plain management.
Second.
All roll.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Pickla?
Yes.
Sucker? Yes, Ray?
Yes.
Berth?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Okay, third reading ordinance, twenty-two sixty-eight to allow the city of Boone to update chapter one seventy of the Boone city ordinances pertaining to flood plain management.
So move.
Second. Call roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Pickla?
Yes.
Sucker? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Berth?
Yeah.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yeah.
Second.
Call roll.
Pickla?
Yes.
Sucker? Yes, Ray?
Yes.
Berth?
Yes.
Ray? Sorry. Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Okay, first reading ordinance, twenty-two sixty-nine to allow the city of Boone to make an adjustment to the leak protection program set forth in section ninety-two point one-three as placed to program qualifications.
Second.
All roll.
Sucker? Yes, Ray?
Yes.
Berth?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Pickla?
Yes.
Number eight, I have no comments, is there any number nine, any council comments?
I do, yes, sir. Uh, just a reminder, everybody's invited, council staff, or the whole house, or the team house, next Tuesday, three P M after. So, attended again.
I have a quick comment, I gave you a revenue spreadsheet for six-twenty-eight story, kinda show you what we did down there, um, the electrical panels were sold to Brown Electric. They originally installed them, so they were happy to get them back. And then, uh, a local, a local guide approached me about the units on the roof, they're gonna be distributed, one goes to the Tik Tok, and then will go to, uh, D J's Tree Service. There's another one in another business downtown here, and the other two are to be determined yet. So they are being recycled in Boone businesses, which I thought was really cool. Uh, getting that to end up in the landfill, which is another good thing. The Girl Scout camp, we are donating, except them, that's gonna happen all night. So going to have one last time, to help get those fixtures out of there. Um, the auction total was a little disappointing, and we ended up, at our expenses, we only ended up making about fifteen hundred dollars. But with the sales of the other stuff and some of the demolition, the salvage that we did, we ended up really four dollars short of seventy-five hundred bucks, so.
Great job.
It's good, good, uh, did pretty good, so that money will go towards the, the new, uh, six-twenty-eight design center, right? Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, something, uh, at some point on the public, to show the public.
Correct.
One more night in there and I'm done.
Anyone else?
Uh, last Thursday, we had, uh, September's first Thursday, we honored our teachers, Mr. Goody Stain and Mr. Swanson, also playing, we raised money for the E R teachers' wish list, and it was a lot of them, despite a little bit, right? Me and the Dallas.
Any other council comments?
Hey, how about any public comments, Ryan's not on the agenda.